We have one more big topic of the day and it's a legislative update. And we're really glad to be joined by our rock star government relations team. Hopefully your ears were burning nice and warmly earlier today as we were talking about you two. So, thank you very much Ms. Doyle and Zacher Khan for joining us. And we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you and good afternoon, not good morning like my notes say. Thank you for being willing to come back at four o'clock. There's just a lot going on in the legislative section that took us away after that original time period ran over. And I'll have if quick, must pull up our slides or someone. And we can get started.
One second, Erin.
Yep. I only know that he had them because he told me he moved through them for me. So you don't hear the infamous next line.
There you go.
There we go. So we only have thirty minutes scheduled with you today. So we'll kind of rip through a lot of this as quickly as possible. Again, Erin Doyle for the record, you're senior government relief manager. Thank you very much for the time today. So just really quickly, we're gonna do a quick reminder of what this session is about. You can stick to the agenda page. And then we have a few slides on some of the hot topics and priorities. We understand it's probably not all you would like to talk to us about. So we're prepared to have conversations about any other legislative issues that might come to mind. But one that does come to mind for me based on your conversations today is around what's happening at the state level on broadband. That is not in the slide presentation, but happy to have that conversation if you are prepared for it and we have the time. And then just a quick reminder of where we are in the session as our next steps kind of play out. So next slide please. Really quickly, this slide is already out of date. At the time that we put this slide presentation together, there were two thousand three hundred forty-seven bills that have been introduced. Just in the last twenty-four hours, another hundred and forty-seven, I believe, were dropped. So we're closing in on probably close to two thousand five hundred bills going to be introduced in just the beginning thirty days of session. So not a lot to do. The other big thing that has happened in this session, as I talked about a lot, is that there are two, what they call sixty-day goals for this legislative body. One is on housing reflected in the fact that that is a priority of every caucus. And the governor's office to come through, they want to do a sixty-day package on housing that is a quote-unquote down payment on what they want to accomplish in this session on housing. And then the semiconductor workforce, the semiconductor joint committee is looking to figure out what they are prepared to implement to make ourselves as a state competitive for our partners that will be applying for TIPSAC dollars. Both as a state partner, but also making sure that local governments are prepared to be a partner in this conversation as well. And then the other big thing that has to happen in every long session, as they call the odd years, is the budget process for the state's biennial budget for state agencies and programs that the state runs. And so that is a very fun and exciting time for all of us to scramble up weight, scramble up weight, and then scramble, and then they're done. So with that, next slide please. Getting into the hot topics and priority issues, we're gonna cover a little bit on the semiconductor first and then the housing homelessness work that's being done, those sixty-day packages. And then talk about our priority work in the AHS world. And then happy to take a pause after we get through those slides and make sure that there aren't topics that you all are interested in or hearing about that we did not include in the hot topics and priorities. And have conversation around what we know in the legislative there. So next slide please. So the semiconductor conversation, this is also somewhat out of date. Like, there's nothing like staying on top of it with the state legislature. Last week, there was, as reported in our memo to you, a draft overview of what they were going to put into a so-called package. And it really only comprised two parts. One was two hundred million dollars to create the pile of funding that could be applied for from a variety of partners in the semiconductor space, including workforce partners as well as businesses and those types that are trying to go after money or trying to get site ready. And then a second part of that package was the land use authority where the governor would be allowed to do, not quite supersiting, but some sort of site industrial site citing. I don't know exactly what to call it at this point, and also it's been changed since it was introduced. What was missing from that original draft package outline were anything related to the financial incentives that we have been keyed in on, for example, extension of gain share. But also some folks, our city partners and their enterprise zones. There and the long-term rural enterprise zone extensions as well, as well as what the industry has been looking for in some sort of tax credit packages that can help them as they go after TIPSAC dollars to show that there is a state partnership and investment of state dollars. Also, not really included, but sort of included indirectly in that two hundred million dollars was really site readiness financing, two hundred million dollars across all the different types of applications and/or partners in the TIPSAC competitiveness. Really doesn't go very far and site readiness and it costs a lot more than that. And then finally, that workforce package wasn't really explicitly drawn out in that draft package outline. It was really kind of muddled in with that two hundred million dollars, which the terms of which really would not work for workforce development partners to access. They wouldn't be able to meet the criteria that were established that would better match with our private industry partners that might attach to those dollars. In the meantime, what makes this slide out of date is ongoing conversations over the weekend about how to make fixes to some of these things explicitly. There's been a lot more work on what incentives can come into the package. What are they considering low-hanging fruit? It's really kind of potentially just extending all of the deadlines, which, you know, are all of the sunset on all of those local tax provisions and the gain share. It's not necessarily a modernization conversation quite yet. We are working to see if that could be brought into the initial package or if that's something that need that legislature is trying to make most of their members comfortable with, is becoming very sticky very fast. So that piece of that conversation has started. There has been a bill introduced. We don't know if it will go to the semiconductor industry or semiconductor committee. But that bill is House Bill thirty-two fifty-three, was dropped in the package today with all of those incentives having their sunsets extended among other things that are included in that bill. There has also been ongoing technical concerns raised with the Senate Majority's Office, the Senate President's Office and the House Speaker's Office about what really needs to happen in that two hundred million dollar fund. And all with explicit revisions towards that workforce portion. We can't really justify bringing in, you know, more companies if we can't have the workforce there. And it's all levels of workforce commitment that need to be made with our workforce boards, with our community college partners, with our high schools, with our universities. So looking at that and then much a little bit more clarification around what needs to happen in that land use authority and that process having a true functionality to it, depending upon how it turns out in the final bill, making sure that they understand zoning isn't the only concern. That we have to undertake a lot of planning that goes with it and that the partners need to be brought to the table in order to have the conversations to make sure that whatever the governor's site selection process work. The, that it is considered what it's going to take to make the capacity for the infrastructure to meet the need.
So if I could pause.
Please.
Because I know the time that we have for all of you is limited. On the semiconductor topic, and there's a housing one too. And for each of these, what I'm hoping is, so I'll demonstrate it with this topic right now. Previously, we were aware that there was some like federal deadline by the end of February. I think I have that right. I'm also aware, and I realize the camera angles are such that you can't see me holding up my arms. So there's that milestone. Then there's a milestone of end of session. And I know after end of session that a special session can be called. So I have two scenarios. One scenario is that we have those two milestones with the different work session and chamber deadlines in between. Get that? And another scenario is not quite clear to me. But what I'm trying to make sure is that we are at a level of readiness to ensure that you can do the job that we've asked you to do. So my question is this. You've let us know what the current bill from the governor, the current package had. You've given us a good flavor of how things are still in the works. Other than these two milestones I've already talked about, do we just need to stay at the readiness level that we talked about? Or are things moving such that we board members need to watch that semiconductor task force meeting every Monday and every Wednesday and be prepared that every Tuesday we might have to have a sync up on potential feedback letters? Or are, are things going on track the way you need from us?
Thank you Chair for that clarifying question and really keeping me on track here. Things are about to start hopefully moving even faster than being able to check in every Tuesday, almost. So this is now, I think tomorrow is the first day that they're going to be actually having public testimony related to the package. And we need to be prepared not just to do something in writing, but perhaps have a commissioner prepared either come tomorrow or Monday to have that presentation particularly focused on the gain share component, because that's something that's kind of been left since it was the first hearing and they haven't really put back on it. So I'm trying to get a sense of what the schedule is for tomorrow versus scheduled for Monday. So to your point, things are about to move really fast because the goal of the, the folks is to have us as far down the line to appear ready by the end of this month, which is rapidly approaching because the first notice of federal or funding opportunity or NOFO is coming out is expected at the end of this month or the beginning of March. So they want to have this package really sewn up to some degree, but they have a lot of internal politics that they're having to work. So right now, we're kind of trying to help by getting those incentive packages done in the, in the background. But we do need someone to be prepared, perhaps to speak to the committee tomorrow evening at five P M. So happy to have volunteers for that.
Okay, so, so, so this is, I'm glad you're asking, thank you. I'm always a back pocket person. I will, and Daniel already knows this, like it or not, I will drop everything else on my schedule. So I don't, but I don't have to be the one to do it. And my colleagues are tired of me saying that after forty years probably. But I'm also assuming that you have a roster of us that you can also pick up the phone and say, I need you in Salem, here's when you need to be there. And I'm comfortable with your deciding any of the five of us to do that with. So. I agree.
Okay.
I go for you Chair.
And may I ask, when we're talking about testimony, are we talking in person? Are we talking online or a combination?
It can be both. We could have some folks, like if we wanted to have two commissioners coming in top, you could have one in person, one on remote, everyone remote. The remote option is there. They do their best to get through balanced between in-person and, and remote with this committee because that's how they've decided to make themselves accessible to the public. So it can be flexible in that way. What I cannot guarantee is the timing within that hour and a half long session that would be expected to testify.
I'm just thinking about if my calendar is booked, obviously remote is easier sometimes.
Correct. Is the governor gonna come to this?
The governor, the governor has not opted to come into the committee. We've had remote videos from Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley provided testimony, Congresswoman Bonamichi provided testimony. The governor's staff has, she is busy touring the state as she promised, and she is working hard to remember that she is the governor and not a legislator and trying to work on her, letting the legislature go through their process while having her staff available to, to be part of the process of discussion. But she has not opted to come to this meeting. And I do not, I'm not aware of plans for her to attend either.
Go ahead. So I'm turning to commissioners for questions. Commissioner Willie has one.
Well, yeah, Erin, certainly I'd make myself available for that gain share discussion if you need it. So put me on your list. In regards to the two hundred million, it seems to me, is that, are they thinking that's generous? And let me, let me give you the background on that is when, when we went through the grand land, grand bargain process and that section of North Hillsboro from Jackson School Road to Brookwood, behind Genentech, all of that area in there, that was brought in. We made it an urban renewal district and knowing that we needed a hundred million dollars just for infrastructure, just for that area. We're talking a five hundred acre parcel. And that's just here in Moorestown County. Two hundred million dollars would certainly be sufficient for that, but that doesn't leave much for everybody else. So that's why I was asking you if two hundred, if they're feeling like that's generous.
So I'm gonna answer this differently than how you asked it. What I will say that we have heard around the two hundred million dollar is a recognition that that is definitely not enough money to do site readiness across multiple sites, sites across the state for different types of manufacturers that might be interested in pursuing semiconductor money. And it's also intended to cover a lot of other things. However, given the constraints of the budget, the earlyness in the process of putting aside this money, I think it is, goes to some of that overall conversation of what is the state's budget going to look like? And they had some folks have pointed out that this is more than even they've asked for in the homelessness emergency response funding. So that being said, I think that this is a starting point for the biennium. I think that we have to recognize that even if we were to magically have sites of five hundred acres assigned for this, that two hundred million dollars over the next biennium is probably gonna have to cover a lot more than just the infrastructure. And that's where multiple partners and the TIPSAC funding itself all have to come together to kind of create that opportunity. But at this point in the budgeting process, that two hundred million dollars seems to be a number that has stuck a little bit with the legislature.
So you've got more information to cover?
Yeah.
Can we bring this topic too close?
Yeah, thank you for the volunteers and I will reach out as quickly as I know what they would like to see tomorrow evening versus Monday night.
Alrighty, thank you.
All right, next slide please. So on the housing and homelessness, this sixty-day package, as they've called it, is really about showing that there is movement on areas where there is agreement and agreement across parties, across caucuses, with the governor's office, with other stakeholders. So the three bills that are listed here are still what we are expecting to be either put in combination or passed, all three of them to create this package. At this point in time, this is moving relatively quickly and there's a lot of conversations on technical amendment pieces. What I will say on the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Bill two eight eight nine, there was an article in the Oregonian that did mention this bill and the permitting processes. I will say that what we have done in House Bill twenty-eight eighty-nine is ask for or retrieve for the urban unincorporated areas instead of bringing them in without a lot of consultation as to the capacity and financing that we may or may not have available to do significantly new housing production planning and strategies and incentives that they give us some time to negotiate with the others, with the cities in the metro region, metro, special districts and the state figure out how those urban unincorporated areas can be looked at to meet some of those housing needs, but not put all of the onus on counties to do work that is traditionally done in incorporated cities. There are other pieces of policy that are sitting in House Bill two thousand and one that align with a lot of the programs that we are already doing. So it's more resources and flexibility to protect those that are most vulnerable to homelessness. And what we haven't seen anything related to is House Bill fifty nineteen. We're gonna get a first glimpse at what pot of money they're really talking about putting aside on Thursday. So that, this is more informational, but also wanted to keep you aware because there is a lot of attention being paid to this. So folks are asking you questions about urban unincorporated areas. In Washington County, we have, we have a fair, fair bit of that. We are really working to be partners, but partners to our cities to figure out how we can all work together to have these treated with the level of planning that is appropriate for the level of incorporation and future incorporation and how to incentivize that process so that no one is left holding a bag of responsibilities without the resources to pay for it.
So just as another data point, and I know our staff has been, our housing department has been working very closely with you guys. And I'm always impressed upon how the two of you are able to articulate data like nobody's business. In the next two biennium, we're going to have five different affordable housing complexes coming out of their affordable timelines to the tune of three hundred and sixty units. So.
I mean two hundred and sixty.
Three hundred and sixty. So in addition to our finishing up the construction on the ones from the Affordable Housing Bond program, we have to somehow, if we were going to meet the current need, find an additional three hundred and sixty units. So that's where I'm hoping the state has either long-term rent assistance in their package or dollars for us to either acquire three hundred and sixty rooms of hotels or build new affordable housing complexes to the level of three hundred and sixty units.
Or write a great big check to air market value and buy in them.
Yeah, yes.
Which would be a big check.
Yeah, that's just our county.
Thank you for that feedback. I think that the preservation piece has definitely not been included in the package that's been under discussed. There has been some eviction prevention and some of the rental assistance is part of that. I, but as I mentioned before, the House Housing and Homelessness Committee and the Senate Housing Committee have all stated that this is a down payment for this session. So I think that there's plenty of room to continue to have that conversation to work for the preservation of current units. It's also an important key and/or providing alternatives for when those, when those tax incentives have run their course based on old laws that had much shorter windows for those, for those affordable housing units. So I will continue to work closely with our housing department to make sure that that is part, part and parcel of the total solution for affordable housing.
So on this topic, same rule applies for me.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over.
I had a question.
Oh, sorry. You're all very small.
The numbers seem to be repeating, is that normal? Because House Bill two thousand and one, I think of the middle housing. I was looking at.
They, they introduced bills with the same set of numbers. Every long session starts with House Bill two thousand and one and Senate Bill one. And those numbers are reserved for the highest priorities. So the Speaker of the House and Senate President usually preserve the first fifteen numbers to show what their priorities are for the session. So housing is their number one priority.
That's why you have to use the year.
Yeah.
Twenty-two dash or twenty dash twenty twenty-one. So Erin, to tease out what you just said, so to the House Bill two thousand and one is a Speaker of the House bill then?
Yes, and it is basically right now an empty shell that they are working on amendments for. It is, it will go through the same process. It's just that it was dropped relating to housing by the Speaker's Office.
Thank you.
Yep, I will turn it with no further questions, I'll turn it over to Zacher too. Speak as fast as I did.
Commissioners, for the record, my name is Zacher Khan, Government Relations Manager here at Washington County. I want to just provide a little bit of backdrop before getting into these three points. The first backdrop point being that the revenue forecast is estimated to come out tomorrow. So that'll be a pretty big deal when that comes out. The second note that I wanted to just flag, and I'm glad that this meeting is actually taking place at four because it gave me a bit of time to digest some new information that came out, especially about the healthcare sector. So this was kind of news that was announced in the Senate Labor and Business Committee this morning. And this is directly relevant to a lot of the things that we're trying to push forth with, with our own three to thrive legislative package this session. The occupation with the most number of vacancies was the healthcare and social assistance occupational field. According to data from fall twenty twenty-two, they saw an estimated twenty-one thousand vacancies and sixteen thousand of those were flagged as hard to fill. Over the next decade, they are anticipating that there will be forty-six thousand new jobs in the sector. And many of those jobs will be requiring education credentials beyond high school as well as other licensure requirements. In many of the fields, including personal care, nursing assistants, registered nurses and medical assistants, eighty-six percent plus of those professions are difficult to fill. And so this is gonna be a necessary field that the state is just going to have to be able to expand within. And our bill, House Bill two six five two, is deeply responsive towards addressing this crisis, both from a primary care perspective as well as a direct care and a caregiving perspective. So as time goes on, our bill is showing to be very resilient, but also it's being very responsive to the needs of the state, which is always a good thing that you want to see when you're advocating. As it relates to workforce, nine eight eight and Measure one ten work group. This past week, the legislature and the House Healthcare Committee has been looking at expanding the nursing workforce through a variety of different incentive programs, including the healthcare provider incentive program, tax credits for rural nurses, incentives for hospitals for training, and also potentially joining the interstate nursing compact of which thirty-nine states are currently a part of. Oregon is not a party to it yet, but this discussion was actually held before the House Healthcare Committee yesterday. We continue to work on the House Behavioral Health Package, meeting with Chair Noss this week to discuss it. But things are looking very optimistic in that regard. I'm thinking very optimistically about it moving forward as well. In addition to that, the nine eight eight bill was heard before the legislature. There were a lot of sponsors and co-sponsors of that legislation. And I'm told that that piece of legislation is being fast-tracked. Just to provide you with a bit of background on that bill, it establishes the nine eight eight trust fund for improving the statewide coordinated crisis system, including maintaining and improving the nine eight eight suicide prevention and behavioral health, health crisis hotline, imposes a fifty cent tax on consumers and retail subscribers who have telecommunications service or, or use V O I P, voice over internet protocol. The bill requires diversity training and demographic representation. And that bill actually links to our work on, in behavioral health because it's gonna require a lot of peer support specialists and diverse representation, which our behavioral health bill actually directly assigns resources to. And the last update that I have for you is the Measure one ten work group. This is a work group that meets every Thursday morning to go over what things need to be improved with regards to the implementation of Measure one ten. And just a couple of updates there, which is number one. Essentially, the work group is coming out with recommendations and policy that is deeply responsive to the Secretary of State's audit of the Measure one ten process and implementation. So O H A is going to, number one, publish a plan by September twenty-three for how the Measure one ten program integrates in the state's overall behavioral health system. Number two, they're gonna work on staggering terms of the Oversight and Accountability Council. And three, they're exploring, I don't know if it's finalized yet, but they are exploring staffing, full-time staffing for the Oversight and Accountability Council. You'll recall that one of the reasons why the CAT is not fully funded is that the O A C made the decision that didn't give us the necessary funds to fund that infrastructure. So I think getting staffing for the Oversight and Accountability Council will be really helpful in response and be more responsive to, to hard infrastructure requests like the CAT. And I think positive things can stem from it. I'll also just add that members of the O A C have said they need staff to support their efforts that when they were quite often left on an island to make really important decisions. So it's good to see this progress. And on Thursday is the next meeting of this one ten work group. And during that And during that meeting, they're going to be deciding what kind of metrics they're going to use to analyze the success of Measure 110 and what kind of analytics are needed.
Wait.
With that, without all positive questions, yes.
Yeah, quick question.
Sure.
OAC?
Yeah, the Oversight and Accountability Council.
Just one more. Add it to your long list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's, that reports to OHA?
So the OAC currently, according to Measure 110, makes the decisions on where the funding for Measure 110 goes. So that's, they're the ultimate decision maker. They don't respond to OHA kind of as means of process, I guess. OHA has to be responsive to them rather than the other way around.
Got it. Thank you. I'm clear. Okay. Any questions from commissioners on this HHS topic? No questions here, go ahead.
Except 988 is not effective right now, right?
In Oregon, is 988 currently effective?
Yes, it is. It's currently being utilized. They need supplemental funding to keep the system going.
They had initial funding. They just don't have the sustained funding.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, just to fully answer that question. In 2021, the Legislative Assembly passed House Bill 2417 that designated the system and measure appropriated 15 million from the general fund to OHA with 5 million to be used for the crisis hotline center and 10 million to be distributed to the counties to establish and maintain mobile crisis intervention teams.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Back to you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Before we go over this really quickly, is there any other legislative topic that you have all heard about that you would like a little bit of information for? So we can just take a note of it and bring that information back to you in another means of communication?
Yes, I have one and it's on Senate Bill 90.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, healthy forests and stable funding for rural communities. Just in case, I assume you didn't have the opportunity of listening to all of our discussion this morning. Is that a safe assumption? Because I'm happy to.
Yes, this is a good assumption. I will go back and listen. I just been a day full of meetings.
Yep. So first, Senate Bill 90 creates a task force to study alternative sources of funding for our forest-dependent communities. So they will be, there's dash two amendments that are expected next Tuesday. There will be a public hearing on Monday at 8:00 AM. So Commissioner Willie and I have been, he's our Washington County rep to our CFTLC region. And then our CFTLC region rep is Margaret McGruder. And so he and I have been following those meetings and have had, I think fruitful discussion between he and I. I certainly agree that we have many rural communities, especially more rural counties than us that are really dependent upon timber funding. I shared this morning that timber is part of our, in my belief, timber is part of our Oregon economy. And where the place I've been trying to navigate is how do we ensure we continue to have a healthy timber economy and the appropriate mills so that we have value-add wood products here from our state while also balancing the need for our biological ecosystems? And so he and I have continued to have discussions and figure out how to navigate that space. And I'm planning on going to the CFTLC meeting in Salem on Friday because our rural community members, Commissioner Willie has shared with me that they are aware of my thoughts, but haven't necessarily heard it from me, so to speak. But I think we might want to think about discussing amongst ourselves if we're supportive of the creation of such a task force and if we are or not, do we also want to have that message carried to this meeting on Monday? So that's my interest. Hopefully I didn't take too long.
Good overview. That was, that was good. And I completely agree with what we're going with that.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Willie. I will get all the information I can and bundle it all for all of you to consider. I don't, there's obviously not another public work session for you guys before Monday.
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm in support of there being such a task force so that there is an effort, a committed effort to look into the needs of these communities.
Yeah, the Council of Forest Trustlands Special Meeting that they had on January 30th. They opposed with amendments, but I think they could get to a support. And I don't know what those amendments have been, Erin, and where that has gone in the last two weeks. So that's what I'd need an update on.
I would say that nothing has been posted yet and I have not had a explicit conversation with anyone that would have knowledge of that, about what those amendments might possibly look like, unfortunately. So if they're not planning to have the public hearing until Tuesday, it probably won't release the amendment, the proposed amendments, that dash two that Chair Harrington mentioned would be an amendment they would probably post on either Friday or Monday. And I have not seen that. I can look around to see what I can find, but at this point in time, I can carry that message forward on Tuesday or propose a draft letter for your consideration once I see those dash two amendments taking the position that you, well, provided the rest of the board agrees to supporting a task force to look into these issues and prepare that for your consideration on Tuesday's work session and get it submitted to the record in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Is that something that the commission would all support? I can't see a thumbs up at this point.
What I'm wondering is if the dash two amendments drop on Friday or Monday and our CFTLC colleagues have the opportunity to weigh in and support. Oh, no, never mind. We probably don't, just don't have time for Monday.
I guess, who submitted the dash two amendments and is the Council of Forest Trustlands in the queue on this? So if I would reach out to Cherry Yamamoto, he'd be aware of what these dash two amendments were and.
It is possible that the Cherry Yamamoto might know what the dash twos are. I do not. I have not seen them. I don't know where they're coming from. So.
And oppose with amendments was what they were looking for. My recollection from the Legislative Committee and Board Meeting of a few weeks ago was they wanted to ensure that if there was a task force, that counties were on it.
Absolutely. That's what they were saying too.
Yeah. So at the board meeting and at the Ledge Committee, I went with that.
Okay.
As did Commissioner Treese. So I think we're all set for the time being.
Yeah, I think we're good with that.
Good discussion.
Okay, thank you. It is scheduled for the 27th, so I have no idea what day of the week it is today. So I assume that so.
That's Monday.
That's Monday. So we can, after they drop everything on Monday, we can always submit testimony, written testimony on behalf of the county within 48 hours after that hearing. So if you'd like reconsideration of whether or not to submit testimony on behalf of Washington County, we can get that done in time for your consideration on Tuesday at your work session.
So then the only other thing I wanted to bring up is from our discussion this morning. I'm quite activated on broadband and we have a meeting, not today. Could be tomorrow. I haven't figured out tomorrow yet, but I know it's this week.
Thursday.
And we want, okay, thank you. And we want to make sure that if there's money to support getting broadband infrastructure and communities and all the acronyms I've just been informed of from our trip in DC that we go for it to the extent that we can. So we're, we're going to be working hard on that and Matt's our point guy and we know you work well with him. And so we're all pulling as one Washington counties.
Yeah, just to provide a little bit of update, there was the initial, an initial hearing in the House Small Economic Development and Small Business Committee that started this conversation on how the state should be responding to the broadband opportunities at the federal level. There were a couple of bills under consideration. I think one piece that is missing from the conversation is a real sense of urgency by all the players. And so I think if that is the message we've heard from you between the messaging that Matt and I have talked about, and we will be working from that perspective to have a bit more voice in that as supporting AOC in their effort to really have the state move faster. I will be joining you with that call on Thursday so that I can be a productive liaison between the federal and the county and the state to make sure that all those needs match.
Awesome, because we got that sense of urgency big time last week. So.
Yes. Okay, if there's nothing further from other commissioners, we'll just really quickly move into what next, what is next. Just really quickly, they are starting to do the preliminary state agency budget hearing. We are, I am trying to get my ducks in a row and make sure that the funding that is necessary for us to continue the work that we do on behalf of the state is really there and present in state agency budgets as well as any funding for anything that they decide that we need to do in addition to the work that we already accomplished on their behalf. And make sure that we can continue to meet the needs of our communities. The other thing that we're looking forward to is the first chamber deadlines. Yes, I'm already looking forward to March 17th, which is the first day the date at which the first chamber has to be scheduled. Their first, the work sessions for any bill in the first chamber and April 4th is the days by which they must have held those work sessions. There are always committees that are not subject to those deadlines. And those are the committees that make us most tired, but the joint committees, the joint semiconductor, joint transportation, as well as the finance, the revenue communities on both sides and rules committees and ways and means are not subject to the same deadlines. But that's kind of looking forward. You can see the session calendar. This is very tiny and hard to read, but the red boxes are the ones that your GR team looks forward to. With that, thank you for your time. Happy to answer any further questions or provide further information as you need it and as we go forward. And we will reach out to folks as we need to actively engage and we appreciate your time this afternoon.
So my question is, at this juncture, I've marked myself out of the office, the week of spring break, but I haven't made my solid plans yet. I would like to make sure since two years ago, the last long session, they continued their work during spring break. So I will rely upon the rolling agenda to have visibility into Board of Commissioner plans. Because if you're all going to be around and ready to go testify, then heck, I'll take the whole week off. But if you're going to be gone, you know, I'm willing to set up my availability to shorten my time away to fit other, who, you know, plans of others who have actually already purchased plane tickets, hotel rooms or other associated packages.
I don't travel on spring break, so I will be here. But remember what you're always telling Mr. Carr over here.
What am I telling Mr. Carr?
Take your vacation.
Oh, yeah. Well, I have my vacation booked for October, so I haven't booked it yet, which is why I'm asking.
And follow along, Tom.
Oh, so at least two of you are at the ready. So.
Yeah, March is crazy tax season, so he might be around, but.
Okay, cool. Great. I could be gone the whole time if I want, is what I heard.
Take your vacations.
I don't know. I'm gonna go with you. Chair was dancing. Looks like fun. Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
Keep up the great work. Really appreciate it. And that brings us to the end of our long, let me just check page two. No, there wasn't anything hiding on page two. That's it. Are there any other developments that have come up we need to check in on? She's reaching for the mic.
I am. So Board, I did forward you two emails today, which are just updates on implementation of the governor's emergency declaration. I do want to draw your attention specifically to the one that I just sent, probably within the last five to 10 minutes. There's a great summary document that staff have developed a PDF that lays out the structure, the OEM structure, continuum of care that will help I'm going to say demystify the next steps in this process and some key next steps that our staff are looking for, look, need to meet with OEM and OCHS. I will note, as we've talked about before, implementation of SHS funding has positioned us in a really good state to already work in this coordinated manner that we can just build off of. So happy to answer any questions that your board has at future meetings or if you want to meet to talk about it more directly. We are determining what are the board touchpoints in this process. We continue to learn through, it feels like dribbles of information sometimes as the state kind of gets their feet underneath them. So just your, your information needs are just helpful for us to know so that we can be meeting your information expectations.
I'm just briefly looking at the piece that they sent. It would be helpful to me and I, if there was like an acronym sheet that went along with this.
Yep.
And I can kind of guess what these are. I mean, I've been around long enough to do it, but it would be helpful.
Decode the acronym soup.
But it's, but it looks, it's, it's very, it's very clear to read as long as you know that stuff behind it.
Great. I've been off email all day, so I don't know what gifts are awaiting me.
I just called it up when.
Cool. Anything else, folks? Alrighty, well, we are hereby adjourned. Great day. Thank you.